The green light? That's the green light. I think I have a good singing voice on this thing. Good evening, Happy New Year. Welcome to the January 13th meeting of the Limbrook Board of Education. We can all rise please for the salute to the flag, Mr. Jaeger. Terry, roll call, all are present. Mr. Poleski is attending remotely. We have a motion to accept the minutes of the December 9th, 2020 regular meeting. Mr. Paschkoff, Second, Mrs. Dinino, all in favor? Regarding art gallery, I believe we have a video clip. January's gallery shows features at work. Show the works from Mr. Lantini's printmaking class.
The Bern Seiderman Gallery is proud to present the January 2021 show featuring the work from Mr. Lantini's printmaking class. The work of Mr. Lantini's printmaking class illustrates the subtleties of surface and entaglio printing techniques which explore different themes such as human behavior, social interaction, nature, self-reflection, and remembrance. In a world of modern technology, the students are drawn to the printmaking process because of the direct tactile relationship it requires of both physical materials and the development of the image. The matrix or printing plate evolves gradually as each mark builds upon the previous, creating a physical record of past action across the surface in what often becomes a true labor of love for the student. Mistakes are not easily undone as they must be painstakingly corrected or inventively incorporated into the image, often leading down new paths of creativity and innovation in a way that a Ctrl-Z option on a computer would have stymied. These figurative prints represent ambiguous narratives that can be characterized as hyperbole. These student works, as chronicled across multiple surfaces and eventually consigned to paper impression, invite a dialogue with viewers and illustrate the dedication and fortitude of the students. Please take a moment to see the rest of these amazing works by visiting the Bern Seiderman Gallery online by clicking on the tab on the high school page.
Also this evening, with beginning of a new year, we have some new teachers. Could Ashley Keon please stand up? Elementary teacher at West End, congratulations. Diane Aronowski, special education teacher at the high school. And Anne Marie Jacobs, teaching assistant, special education, Waverly Park. Congratulations. Also this evening, we have some tenure announcements. Could Marie Saro Pizarro please stand up? School media specialist, Marion Street, congratulations. Deborah Dory, could you please stand up? Congratulations, teacher assistant, West End. We also have three retirements this evening. Mr. Jaeger, if you could read the first?
Whereas, Ms. Janet Terrian, teacher in the Limbrook Union Free School District, has announced her intention to resign effective November 27th, 2020, with the intention to retire effective September 8th, 2021, close of business after 27 years as both a teacher aide and a classroom teacher at West End. And whereas, Ms. Terrian, whose father was a math teacher at North Middle School, dreamed of one day becoming a Limbrook Owl, and in September of 1993, was hired as a teacher aide at West End Elementary. Mrs. Terrian proved to be an intelligent, caring, dedicated educator, whose love of children, professional preparation, and field experience qualified her for a full-time elementary teaching position to which she was appointed to in September of 1994. And whereas, Mrs. Terrian accepted instructional challenges with enthusiasm. Over the years, she has taught grades two, four, and five, and was also an elementary teacher of science. She demonstrated strength in the areas of math and language instruction and planned effective and rigorous lessons while also connecting with students on a personal level. And whereas, Mrs. Terrian was extremely passionate about being a lifelong learner and was always willing to be the one to try new technology and instructional strategies to improve student outcomes. Her love of technology led her to be proficient in a myriad of digital education platforms. Mrs. Terrian even shared her love for CSOW with the faculty years prior to the district's adoption of the learning platform. And whereas, it wasn't unusual for Mrs. Terrian to spend her personal money on anything that would make learning exciting for her students. She maintained a highly organized learning environment, decorated her classroom each year to make it look like a room in a beautiful house. Mrs. Terrian put her heart and soul into everything, and even became West End famous for transforming her room each year into a rainforest with the help of parents and students. And whereas, Mrs. Terrian provided several presentations on various topics during faculty meetings and also served on several building-level and district committees. And whereas, the Board of Education thanks Mrs. Terrian for her commitment to Limbrook Schools and wishes her a happy and healthy retirement with her mother, her children Matt, Kevin, Laura, and Sean, and new grandchild Grayson. Mrs. Terrian will be sure to enjoy her retirement years, camping, hiking, fishing, crafting beautiful jewelry, and living in Florida. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby accepts the resignation of Ms. Janet Terrian effective November 27th, 2020, for the purposes of retirement effective September 8th, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Jaeger. Mrs. Hanson? Make sure you give it right back.
Whereas, Diane Dake, teacher aide in the Limbrook Union Free School District, has announced her intention to retire effective January 15th, 2021. After 15 years of service, the principal, staff, students, and parents of Marion Street Elementary School and Limbrook High School.
Whereas... Should I start at the beginning?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna start over. Whereas, Diane Dake, teacher aide in the Limbrooks Union Free School District, has announced her intention to retire effective January 15th, 2021, after 15 years of service to the principal, staff, students, and parents of Marion Street Elementary School and Limbrook High School. And whereas, Diane began her career in Limbrook as a teacher aide at the high school. Assigned as one of the first aides in the testing room, she quickly defined the role, ensuring that all students who entered the room would be well cared for. She immediately connected with any student that she worked with. Her sense of humor and caring nature are infectious. Diane has been a great cheerleader for all students, especially those with special needs. And whereas, Diane's move to Marion Street School five years ago was another opportunity to shine. From the moment Diane entered Marion Street, she adapted to her new role and unlocked another set of skills. The genuine care that she showed towards our elementary students when assigned to students as a one-on-one or group aide, and the immediate rapport that she has always established with the children has been commendable. Diane has been an advocate for students with special needs. Her compassionate demeanor and desire to ensure that our students are participating in learning and growing positive social relationships has been to the benefit of all our elementary students. And whereas, Diane has continued to expand her skillset and honed her technology skills this past year to ensure that our students were able to access the curriculum and successfully participate in learning. Diane has welcomed new learning opportunities with an opened mind and positive attitude. And whereas, the Board of Education thanks Diane Dake for her commitment to Limbrook Schools and wishes her a happy and healthy retirement with her husband Douglas and her daughter Danielle. Diane's giving nature will likely result in her spending her retirement years serving as the cheerleader for her husband and daughter. Diane's enthusiasm and love of family and friends will keep her active in her retirement years. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby accepts the resignation of Diane Dake for purposes of retirement.
James, if you could stand up, please.
Whereas, Mr. James Dugan Messenger in the Limbrook Union Free School District, has announced his intention to retire effective January 21st, 2021, after 12 years of dedicated service to the students, faculty, and parents of the Limbrook Union Free School District. Whereas, Mr. James Dugan graciously served the district with a smile upon his face while entering each office in the district. And whereas, Jim was always eager to recite his latest batch of clever jokes and riddles to the staff of the Limbrook School District. Jim brightened everyone's day, and his sense of humor will surely be missed. And whereas, Jim's commitment was unwavering during his 12-year span with the Limbrook School District, he proudly served without hesitation during times of emergency such as Superstorm Sandy and the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas, Mr. James Dugan...
Why can't they hear me sing? I should say, they should hear me sing. Someone put me on the voice. Although, last singer show, I can't understand.
I think we're good.
All right, we're back. We should be able to see the full spectrum of the board now. Dr. Burek, moving on to presentations.
Certainly. It gives me great pride that for the second year in a row, we have a special announcement to make. It's already been on our website, but it deserves recognition at the Board of Ed meeting. Each year, we have a Presidential Scholarship Program sponsored by the U.S. Department of Education. Well, the New York State Department of Education recently announced a list of 25 nominees for the U.S. Presidential Scholars. For the second year in a row, Limbrook High School has one of those 25 throughout the state. It's an incredible accomplishment for students who show determination, strong character, and we are very proud to have a student at Limbrook High School actually be in one of these finalist categories. So we are happy to share that senior, Damaris Hernandez, is one of the New York State nominees. So congratulations, Damaris. And we will be sending a shirt over to the high school for Mr. Reynus to present to you, so congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Burek. Mr. Paschkoff corresponds to the board.
This month, we received a bunch of emails, one from a parent praising a staff member, one from a parent regarding yellow zone testing, one from a parent regarding community service, one from a parent regarding remaining remote, two from parents regarding closure before the break, one from a parent regarding current events, and one from a parent regarding elementary hybrid instruction.
Thank you, Mr. Paschkoff. Moving on to reports from trustees. Anything to report from any of the trustees?
I do.
Mr. Paschkoff?
I attended the Tri-Am WebEx Holiday Cabaret...
Cabaret Night.
Yeah, Holiday Cabaret Night. And I, you know, it was nice because there's so few concerts and sporting events, obviously, this year so far, that it was nice to see the kids put that together. And I think it was put together relatively last minute, and it was nice. Also, some of the holiday concert clips that we were privileged to see, so... Good job, Music and Arts Department.
Thank you, Mr. Pas... Dr. Burek?
And just, Mr. Poleski reported last month regarding the Policy Committee of the Board that we met to discuss several policies. They're listed on the agenda, and all of them, all of the language dealt with inclusion, diversity language, just to coincide with the board's goal. So we reviewed those policies on the goals and objectives, instructional materials, library materials, recruiting, and professional learning, just to align ourselves with our diversity goals. So there was a first reading tonight for those policies.
Also like to point out that the Audit Committee will meet on January 26th, and the Facilities Committee will meet on February 1st. Regarding old business, the Joint Council of PTAs have accepted the board's invitation, and we will be meeting with them remotely on January 19th. We have nothing under new business this evening. And Dr. Burek, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Belmont. I know you've heard from me twice today, but it is time for our monthly COVID update. I'm going to try to speak to probably some of the items that have been on your mind since the last Board of Education meeting and our last COVID update. With the increase in numbers in our district and throughout the county, one would think that perhaps we should be in a yellow zone by now, but we are not. It is my understanding that I might receive an email the night before we are designated a yellow zone. It would be a quick turnaround to notify the community. And I just need to tell everyone to be aware that the timing is out of my control, that I will always notify the community as soon as I possibly can. We need a couple of days to activate testing procedures for the two-week testing requirement while schools stay open. I reported last week in our bulletin that there were schools that had not met the 20% requirement to stay open. As of now, we still do not have 20% of consent from parents for South Middle School or Marion Street. So those buildings would have to still close unless we get the 20%. And to reiterate, we have contracted with around-the-clock testing and screening services to conduct the testing when the need arises. Testing will take place at the individual schools, and specific logistics and locations would be determined if and when the time comes. Now, I'm just sharing that information because it had come up as far as questions, and Mr. Paschkoff had actually just mentioned a communication that the board received about it. I will say, and I'll go out on a limb, that my personal opinion is that the governor is moving away from that microcluster zone initiative. I think that when he rolled it out, he thought that perhaps there would be pockets of yellow and orange and red, but the numbers have just spiked dramatically. So we're not hearing very much about these zones anymore. So we will just sit and wait. Due to the rise in cases, many of the remote families who were given the opportunity to return to in-person learning and made that choice actually ended up choosing to stay remote after all. We respect those very personal decisions, and I know there are differing views on everything related to COVID. No district is going to make everyone happy, and there are many people who felt that we should have gone remote the whole week before the December break, and there were some who said we should not have done so. There are many feel, who feel that children belong in school no matter what. So for transparency reasons, I just want everyone to know that our number-one priority is to keep the schools open for in-person learning. We know our cares. As a result, we push the logistics and the staffing resources to the limit almost on a daily basis. We had all intention to conduct in-person learning all three days before the December break. By midday on that Monday, it was evident that we could no longer staff our buildings to continue for those two remaining days. As I had mentioned in a follow-up communication, there were 70 members out due to COVID-related circumstances, and that's not a scenario that we could endure. Therefore, we needed to make that announcement. You found out as soon as possible by midday so that you could begin planning. Today, we had another situation with Waverly Park. This time, yesterday's message gave everyone a warning that it might happen. Unfortunately, with the two additional cases, it did. I share this with you because there should always be a backup plan for this COVID situation. The COVID situation could cause us to switch on a dime. Again, I ask everyone to be understanding and cooperative. Families just need a plan ready to execute when the call comes. I have to share with you, I have the health and safety of 3,400 students and staff and their families on my mind at all times. I do not take the gravity of that responsibility lightly by any means. All I ask is for continued cooperation as we progress through this year together. Our Phase Four of the Reopening Task Force continues to... The large group has once again broken up into smaller groups according to levels, elementary, middle, and high. They all have different issues. The goal of the groups is to devise the method to bring all students back to school whenever the time comes. The groups are thinking of alternate instructional spaces, such as increasing outdoor learning environments when the weather cooperates in the springtime. Phase Four will continue its discussions. The last item I need to mention and provide reassurance for you on is how the district handled the aftermath of the events which took place on January 6th. The siege on the Capitol was a shock to all of us and impacted everyone to varying degrees. Our Social Studies Department quickly began sharing ways with each other on how to handle situations and discussions the next day with our students. Support staff was brought to the forefront and offered extra help, support for those who needed it. In essence, we implemented our post-crisis team whereby all staff played an important role in providing a safe space for our students to share thoughts and ask questions. I personally sat in a class to observe how a discussion unfolded, and I'm proud to share that the civility and citizenship are alive and well in the Limbrook Public Schools. The teacher that I actually sat in with was Mr. LaCicero, and the discussion was based on fact, historical context, while still allowing students to share personal opinions. It gave me great hope for the future because our children are the deep thinkers and truly care about the world in which they live and the life they want to live in a peaceful society. They will continue to develop and demonstrate that civility in all aspects of their lives. And that's my COVID update.
But Dr. Burek, I want to go back over some of the issues that you addressed. For one thing, let's go reversal, when you talked about Governor Cuomo having identified those different clusters, the one difference also in his approach now is for the first time two days ago, he talked about the importance of opening up the economy, which is philosophical change. So that perspective should also impact his desire, not only hopefully to get the economy going because he recognizes the revenue we need and the limitations on what federal funding he may get, but also that philosophy may impact his decisions on what he may do as far as schools and that's impact. But in the very beginning, I want to go over again what you were saying about the fact that there was a request that came in from the community to maybe get more kids into the classroom, correct? And then when you did a survey, and then when it came time to actually make that decision, all those numbers and all that impressions that we got of people wanting to come back, that in fact did not play out, that many still wanted to remain on remote.
Correct.
Right. So it's important because we've been going through this since last year, and throughout this consistently, this board and this administration have pointed out the fact that we've stuck to the plan that you mentioned, to keep the health and well-being of our staff and our students in mind, and that plan has enabled us to keep our district open with momentary closures and isolations when needed. Unfortunately, we have the situation now with Waverly Park, which is also... due to the fact that people are not doing what was asked of them. If you know your kid has COVID, don't send your kid to school. If your kid's getting tested, don't send your kid to schools to find out that the kid has COVID the next day. So, there's some personal responsibility that has to be taken by people. But it's important to understand because every few months, people come to the microphone, the people come to the board and the administration, start asking for things as they did in August when they were concerned. This administration has stuck to their plan all along, which has been great, and the things that are being asked for are not there. So, that's, I think, a great credit to the administration, the board, for keeping consistent with the plan irrespective of what comes up. So, a lot of time and money is spent gathering information, appeasing certain voices that in fact do not move forward what the impression is. And that's why this goes back to August, when a survey was done, which initially gave us the impression of one direction, and then when you ask specific decisions, it went in a different direction. Same thing again last month. Work was done to find out how many people were coming back in. There was a big call to send people back to class, but when the decision was made to who wanted to go back into school, it didn't happen. So, it's a great credit, and it just proves when those voices come up again along the way that we stick to our plan, doing what has been and will consistently be in the best interest of the district. And I just think it's important that it be recognized that the administration's done a great job in staying consistent with doing what's in the best interest irrespective to which voices may be pulling one way or the other. So, I appreciate that. That's all I have on that issue.
Okay. My next item is actually some good news. Town of Hempstead, a credit to the Town of Hempstead under the leadership of Donald Clavain because the town was able to secure grant money to help in the preparations for COVID and all things related to COVID to create a safe environment. And we, under the leadership of Dr. Lynch, quickly got on the application process in order to receive $150,000, and I'm happy to announce we were awarded that $150,000. So, that will help offset the 1.5 million that we actually spent to open up our schools in September. It's a drop in the bucket, but every little bit helps.
It's also worth pointing out that Don Clavain's office was also the office that enabled us to have a graduation last year. The Town of Hempstead has been very good to us. They've also actually done a great job of doing the pop-up testing sites and communicating those to the residents and making it free to those also. So, being that we don't know how the end of the year this year will look, we'll continue to praise Mr. Clavain and the assistance he's giving us, but it's really been a great job they've been doing to help us as a district and to the people in our community. It's much appreciated.
Okay. My next item, I just want to give a plug to the PTA, and I believe Mrs. Stalter is here tonight during the public comment section. She will outline a few more details, but now that we have the addition going on to the high school, and it's progressing quite nicely, the PTA has worked with our director facilities, Mr. Seder, and actually the general contractor also to create a pathway that would begin around the flagpole and go along the side of the building, and it's a brick fundraiser, and they're calling it a pave-a-path campaign. And I'm going, I'm not going to steal all her thunder, but I just wanted to bring everyone's attention to that. You will be getting some information about this, and it's a wonderful way to recognize your home school, alumni, current families, future families you may want to recognize. It's a nice thing to do, and it would be a wonderful addition to the overall project that we have here at the high school. I'm going to turn over the curriculum update to Dr. Belekis.
Thank you, Dr. Burek. As you're aware, one of this year's board goals is to continue to promote diversity, inclusion, and equity for all.
I have to turn it on.
Try again. As you are aware, one of this year's board goals is to continue to promote diversity, inclusion, and equity for all. Tonight's curriculum update is about how this goal permeates our music programs. Multiculturalism is taught both in unit lessons in our general music classes and repertoire-based learning in performance ensembles. Through song and symphonic literature, students are provided the opportunity to discuss and explore the music of many different cultures, races, and ethnicities, including African, Latin American, Japanese, Hebrew, Native American, and others. In studying the historical significance of relative events and people of diverse cultural backgrounds, our students gain knowledge about diversity, tolerance, and deeper cultural understandings. These studies also allow students to identify with notable musicians who may share similar backgrounds and ethnicities and thus see others just like themselves represented in this field. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Belekis. And Capitol Projects update, Dr. Lynch?
Dr. Burek pretty much said the big story, which is that the addition is progressing very nicely. Both Dr. Burek and myself toured the site just last week, and the walls are up, and it's really progressing well. We're right on track, and then we opened the Marion Street elevator bids today. We'll have a recommendation by next board meeting.
Thank you, and that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Burek. Anything else on the board? Moving on to public comment, we will start with Mrs. Stalter. Do you want to come up and address? And then after that, anybody else who wants to address the board, please come to the microphone, identify yourself, and whether you live in or out of district.
I am a resident, and I'm here on behalf of the Lindbrook Council of PTAs. As you know, every year we do a scholarship drive, and the majority of the money we raise is at our homecoming football game, which we all know did not happen. So, we had to pivot like everything else this year, and we took the opportunity to work with Mr. Seda, who was a great asset to us. And we are going to partner with Bricks R Us, which is a company that engraves the bricks, and they've also created a donor website for us. So, that's the information that'll be shared. So, it's a very user-friendly website. We actually have a few people who have already used it, so hopefully we've worked out any of the kinks. But as Dr. Burek said, there's going to be a few phases. The flagpole will be first phase. We have another path along the retaining wall, and hopefully we will sell out, and we might even come back to and ask for Phase Three. But we are very excited about it. We think that this will at least raise what we usually raise at the homecoming game, if not more. And we're going to tuck a little bit away for next year because, again, who knows what's going to happen? So, that's all. I just want to say thank you for this opportunity, and we typically give between like $15,000 and $20,000 a year in scholarships. So, we're happy to say that we think we'll be able to do that again this year. So, thank you.
And people that are interested, how do they go about?
We are going to, there's a flyer that I've asked Harry to post tomorrow in all of the virtual backpacks. We have a Facebook page that it's going to be posted on as well. So, between that Facebook page and going to all of the, you know, different schools, we're going to be pushing it out through those venues first. And if we need to, we'll go.
Sorry, if you send me the link, I will put it in this Friday's bulletin.
Perfect. Perfect. And if we need to, you know, we might consider doing some kind of local mailing. We are going to meet with the Chamber of Commerce also. So, but I think, I don't think we'll need to. I think, I think we're going to have a great response. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Belmont, your words tonight seem to be directed at members of our community that take time away from their night and their families to get up and advocate for things that are important to them. I, for one, have never felt this uncomfortable being in a room before with this school board. I have been coming to meetings for over five years. I have only missed two in those, in that time, and it's because I had pneumonia, because what's important to me is this school district. I've come up here, and I'm feeling very emotional right now because I have come up here with happy tears and been proud of this school district, and all I'm seeing is you speaking for everyone. There are not seven separate voices, but there are seven separate people sitting on this school board, and you speak for all of them, and you say that you don't really care what we have to say. And I know those aren't the exact words you used, but that's exactly what I heard, and I'm sure other people did too.
Well, how can you hear that if that's not the words I used? That's not even posed to the words I used.
You know, you can sit here and bicker with me like you do every time.
I'm not bickering.
I was publicly attacked, and I wasn't publicly apologized to, so I am tired of being nice. I am tired of sitting here and being nice and playing nice when you disrespect this community. There is a public policy of the Board of Education that you can look up if you're not familiar with that says that public comment should be encouraged at these meetings, not told that, oh, we come up here, we ask for things, and then we don't even go back. We want a choice. We have a right to that choice. We pay taxpayer money for that choice. We live in this community as a choice. So, don't tell us because we didn't choose, because we can't predict the future, and we didn't know that there would be a major spike, that people that thought they were going to send their kids back had any reason, had a way to say, they couldn't say that, oh, no, I changed my mind. That's not okay. It's not okay to have a choice. It's not okay to change your mind. Don't tell me that me coming up here and saying that I believe that there should be a seat in the school for any kid that wants to come back when it's, when it's good and safe is not okay. I believe, Dr. Burek. I believe how sincere she is when she says that she does not sleep at night because all she thinks about is the health and safety of the school, of this school district, and I believe that. But what I don't believe is that most of you, and not all of you, but most of you, don't care either. And you know what? I don't hear from any of you. I hear from you, and you're now the face, they're the puppets. That's what I see, and I don't care if you don't like me. That's none of my business, and that's very apparent after the comments from the last two meetings. And I held myself, and I didn't say anything, and I could have written a letter to the BOE, but it would have come out as, oh, let me see. We got some emails, and they were a comment about something. It's useless. Like, you're elected, all of you are elected. Represent us. Don't put us down. Don't discourage us from coming up here and advocating for our children. Maybe we're doing something that you should be. Maybe you should be doing more. You need to go back and review your own policies. How about a public policy on, oh, social media, behavior in public? Maybe you should just think about that and review it. I have nothing more to say. You can say whatever you want to me because all you're going to do is yell at me and berate me like you've done many months before, and now we're lucky enough to have it on video.
I yelled at you and berated you?
I sat in a four-and-a-half-hour meeting in August on these awful chairs in the caf, in whatever it was, the cafeteria or the gym, and I got up at 11:30 at night. I sat through it all, and it wasn't the first time I heard it because I'm on different committees, and I heard it through curriculum, and I heard whatever, and I sat there, and I listened, and I said that I was disappointed, and every one of you, you took it personally. And how do I know that? Because the next time I walked in this building, people were coming out of a board meeting, and I was shunned, like, what is that? And then the meeting after that, of course, I won't use horrible language like other people will, and I won't say it, but how dare you, when I'm coming up to the podium to speak, ask me what I want? You know what I want? I want to be heard. I want my children to have the education that they deserve. I want this school district to be safe. I want my elected officials to advocate for my children. I want a lot of things. I'm willing to get up, and I'm willing to speak for those people that aren't willing to. And I really, I'm just tired of the attitude that this school board seems to have, and you know what? And again, I'm not pointing fingers directly at everyone because there are some nice people and some good people on this board. But it is time for you guys to either stop being this one big group of people that stand up for each other when you're doing bad things, or it's time to have a separate voice. And I know that I'm not voting for all of you as a group. I'm voting for individuals. And three of you are up for election this year, and it's time to think about what you did because every time, and I went back, you know, just because, and I know you hate listening to me talk. That's been made clear to me too.
Mrs. B, nobody hates listening to you talk. We sit up here for hours to listen to you. Like you said, in August, we've never rushed anybody, we've never cut anybody off at the mic. This is the colonoscopy of public service, and we've never cut people short. We're welcome to as many people that want to come up here. It seems like you're putting a lot of issues into what you're trying to say. So, you said right.
Really? Tell me what I'm trying to say because I'm sure you know it.
Because to sit here, well, first of all, you began by saying personally to me that I yelled and berated you. I asked you for an example of that, and you didn't give it.
Yes, the night, that night in August when we were there for four-and-a-half hours, and whatever I was saying, you're like, give me.
I had never in 13 years yelled or berated at anybody that's come to the microphone. I have sat here.
Your tone of voice, just right now, this tone of voice is what I'm talking about. So, you're not loud like I am.
So, you think this is yelling? So, you don't like my tone?
Okay. I don't like the words that are coming out of your mouth. Let's, like this, like when I said to you that people feel like their emails aren't responded to, you said, give me an example. It's 11:30 at night, and everybody else is gone, but we're there, and I said, I'll give you an example, but I'm not going to throw somebody under the bus, and you kept badgering me because you wanted me to name names and throw people under the bus because you don't believe that we didn't respond to an email.
I asked you to give an example. I didn't tell you to throw somebody in the bus. When you're going to make an allegation about something, it's important to give an example of it. So, your allegation was that people were being ignored by email. They didn't choose to come, you did. I didn't ask you to give you their names. I said, provide me with the email they weren't responded to. Every email is responded to. Anybody that comes to the microphone is responded to.
So, that's really funny because with the next couple of months, you made sure that you continued to tell me what the chain of command is and how I should go through it. I did send you emails, actually. I sent you emails that that was never responded to, that that person was responded to.
It was responded to. It wasn't the response you wanted, but it was responded to. You got an email that said, the board received your email. They meet once a month, so they can't give you a response until they meet, and if appropriate, you will get a specific response to your email. Now, it also says that the majority of emails are operational, very few are for the board. They're for superintendents, they're mostly for teachers and principals, but they're not for boards. Those emails, that's the response that's on the email, those individuals get that response, and the majority of them follow up then with their teachers or their principals. But anything that comes to the board is addressed by the board if it's a board-level issue, which the majority of them are not because there are operational questions.
So, this is like the fourth time you're telling me about the operational issues and how the chain of command works. I get it. I do. Believe me. We both went to law school, we're both bright people. I get it. And I know when I have to go to my principal now, I am not daring to email the board about. In fact, I don't email the board about it at all because, again, I'm going to reiterate, it doesn't matter what you just said, that they're answered. If people aren't getting direct answers but are getting wide, broad answers that may contain, they're hearing, let me, let me put it a different way. They're hearing the superintendent's reports, and included in those superintendent's reports are possible answers to their question. And maybe if I'm writing up the report or reading it, I know that I'm answering it, but not the person that's writing the email may not believe that that's a correct or full or complete answer to their question. So, they ask it again, and they hear this similar answer, and they still feel unheard. What I was not doing was not saying, you're not doing your job, and that's how you took it. But what I was saying was people feel like they're not being heard because they hear, we got various emails, and, and so we, what I was asking you at that time was maybe consider talking about some of those things in the email, or at least have a, an automatic response that says it's been listened to, or maybe a person, I mean, you have a secretary, can write back and say, thank you for your email, Ms. So-and-so, we will be discussing this at the board meeting, and your answer will be discussed in a report. That's all that people want, and that's what I was trying to say. What I came up and said was, before that, was that I was disappointed in the way the school district, how things went down in the spring, right? I was very disappointed. I made that clear. I wasn't angry with anybody, I was disappointed, and I said that people also are feeling disappointed, and this was another reason. And instead of trying to fix it, you're giving excuses, and I think we're just tired of the excuses. Do we know why the schools are closed or closing because people have COVID and how they're getting, yep, we know that. You know what? We get emails all the time. I'm not sitting here saying that we don't know what's going on. That's not it. We're asking for different things, and I think that I am fine having a conversation at another point, but nobody has taken me up on it, and I sit here and I offer it, and don't tell me how awful it is to sit here in public service because all of these people, including me, spend hours and hours and hours volunteering their time for this school district because we all, we all should have the same agenda, and that's the children of this school, of all these schools, and that's not everybody's agenda up here. It's pushing their own agenda, their political agenda, which is nonsense, and it's inappropriate, and it's disgusting, and I'm tired of it. And so, I have a right as a member of this community, as a resident, as a taxpayer, to come up here and tell you that I don't like the words that came out of your mouth. And you know what? I'm going to go back, actually, I had something else, and I'm going to go back, and I'm reading it. Now that I said what I had to say, but what I want to say is that I think you all need to review your own board policies because you're talking about having a because you're talking about having a policy committee and reviewing them, and it's great that we have a policy on one subject, but you need to, you need to know what they are. You need to know what they are. You needed to know how to behave yourselves in public, and you need to not be one voice if you're not one voice. If people on this board have difference of opinions about how things should go, and please, don't quote to me the three jobs that you have based on that little pamphlet about what a school board does. I'm very well aware of it. School board actually doesn't have just three things. They have a list of things that they're supposed to be doing, right? And you, just like every, every child that gets a test and every teacher that has to, you know, deal with their supervisors, the school board too should be held accountable. Everybody should be accountable for their actions. And so for you to make a statement here that the people came in August and complained and complained and complained, it's just wrong. That's my opinion. I don't care if you like it, I'm telling you what it is, and I have a right to stand here and say that because your policy says I can. So have a good night. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Anything else on the board? Moving on to superintendent's recommendations, I'd like to ask for consent agenda on resolutions 2001(c)(1) through 2001(c)(9), 2001nc(1) through 2101nc(9), and 2001g(1) through 2001g(3), and 2001g(5) through 2001g(18). May I have a motion, please? Mrs. Dino, second. Mr. Yeager, may I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Mrs. Marcus, second. Mrs. Hanson, all in favor? We're not going to executive session, so that completes our meeting for this evening. Everybody stay safe.